September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Pembroke School Committee meeting. Columnists need to order at six oh five. If you would all stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, so if, welcome to everyone. Thank you for coming today. And if you'd like to say anything, if you wouldn't mind just signing in on the sign-in sheet there, and you can come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record when you do so. Also, I want to welcome Lauren. She's our student representative, so we're excited to have her as well. Thank you for being here.
Welcome, Lauren.
So Lauren was one of the very few brave Pembroke High School students that was willing to volunteer. We got one senior, one junior, and two sophomores that were interested. So we are super excited and hope that Lauren has such a great experience that there's a hundred kids that want to be the student rep next year.
So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, so we wanted to talk today about, you know, one of the things that we want to talk about is, I forgot to shut my phone off. This happens every time. It's one of my kids. I'm sorry. So we wanted to talk about the visitor calendar to celebrate student and staff achievements. So I think it's interesting that we bring this up because David and I, this weekend, were both at an Eagle Scout celebration. And we noted, you know, David spoke, and I was there as a guest of the person who was Jacob Bunzel, who received the award. And I, we were thinking, like, wouldn't it be really cool to give something from the school committee, some sort of a certificate whenever somebody achieves this? And I think, like, it would be awesome if we could come up with sort of a list of accomplishments that we want to acknowledge from the school committee?
Sure. Anytime an Eagle Scout does their project on a school-related issue or item, they do get a letter from, from myself congratulating them on earning the rank of Eagle Scout. It would be helpful if you guys had a list of things you'd like us to look at, since Eagle Scouts is outside of school, right? So we can easily tell you, you know, some of the great things that our kids and our staff here are doing. But if there's outside organizations that you want us to monitor, too, that would be helpful to know, so we can get a list going.
Yeah, so let's start, let's go through and get everybody's thoughts. Mike, do you want to?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to do something like that. Maybe if we send them, we send them a note, or we try to acknowledge that they've done something great. And I'm not really too sure, like, you know, what we could, what we could do. I think it's a good, good idea to talk about it, though, because it's nice to acknowledge this kind of stuff. Like, an Eagle Scout is a very big deal. I know there's a lot of other stuff like that the kids are involved in, both in the school and out, that's worth acknowledging and encouraging.
Yeah. So maybe before you guys start to come up with an exhaustive list, we can decide what the recognition looks like. So I would suggest either the first or the second meeting of the month, you have an agenda item for recognition of that, and that we invite the individuals, whether it's students or staff, because there's some great staff accomplishments we want to acknowledge as well. And we can have certificates. Our Sharon Montefiore, the communication specialist, can make certificates for them. I think that might be a nice way to have folks, you know, in the first fifteen minutes of the meeting, because I know some people don't want to stay here for the two hours.
Right.
And I get that. But maybe having that as a standing agenda item once a month, either the first or the second meeting, so that, you know, we can be thinking about, okay, who's coming up for the next month, and what can we, what can we celebrate?
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree. I think that's a good thing to do. I think, like, just, you know, taking the first few minutes of every meeting, just to, or every other meeting, to acknowledge, you know, students or even staff that are doing something, going above and beyond, is a good, is a good thing to acknowledge. And it kind of gets the meeting started on a positive note as well.
Absolutely.
This is where maybe, like, the student reps might also have some ideas of things going on. And I know we have, you know, some
You can be our eyes and ears.
Sixth grade team, you know, the sixth grade have the, you know, student councils too. So I don't, there's a lot of things that, you know, I know with BotBol did well this year, too.
BotBol would have been like a really good one. We should, like, give some sort of a certificate, because they were, it was like a, but if you have any ideas, we'd love to hear them, too.
I know for, for the high school, we have underclassmen awards, and you get this, like, certificate, and it looks like very special. It's signed by, like, Mr. Talavet and your assistant principal. And I think those would be a very good idea, because it seems very professional, kind of makes you feel important.
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe at underclassmen awards night, we give some sort of a school committee.
Yeah. How about if we, the administrative team, we meet this Thursday, start a list for you guys, and I can circulate it for you to talk about the next meeting. Just, I think we could probably spend twenty minutes talking about, you know, things that students are achieving outside of school. But maybe if we can start the list, you can let us know if we've missed anything or an area that you'd like us to look at. I know there's some 4-H stuff. There's definitely stuff outside of Pembroke Public Schools that we want to recognize, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I think, what I thought was very impressive, and I've actually been to a couple of these Eagle Scout events from kids that did things for the town, for the school, whatever. I thought it was nice, you know, Josh Cutler gives a very nice citation, you know, and a beautiful thing. And if I remember correctly, that actually gets entered into the State House Record. They approve it on the floor. So that kind of stands forever.
Yeah.
And then when Town Hall, select woman Tracy Marino was there, Sammy, she read a letter, and then I believe she said the, the name hangs on the wall in Town Hall, which, again, I thought was another, I never knew that. And again, statistically, they said seven percent of scouts go on to become Eagle Scouts. We have seventy that have come through Pembroke, which I found absolutely amazing. Again, it's just a statistic I wasn't even close to being aware of. So again, I'd love to do something, certainly recognize them at school, but I think if, you know, again, whether it's you, me, Patrick, you know, whoever, we go to one of these ceremonies, I think it'd be great to have some type of a presentation piece
Yes.
that we could, you know, you know, hand out, again, kind of a, hey, congratulations. As I say, we're going off of the official congratulations of the school committee, or the Board of Selectmen, or whatever it happens to be. I just think it's a very, it's a cool ceremony. I'll tell you, any of you people who've never been to one of those, if you ever get the chance to go to an Eagle Scout ceremony, it is absolutely, you don't realize what these kids do
Oh, my gosh.
to attain that rank. It is absolutely impressive. So my two cents.
Absolutely.
So coming on the wire, Patrick.
Glad you made it.
I was told to drive fast.
I said safe, not fast.
So we're just talking about maybe once a month, recognizing student and staff achievement as a standing, standing agenda item.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I mean, over the years, we've done a variety of things. I think, you know, bringing them in and.
You got here late. Nobody was looking out for you.
If his cup is on, just pull it nice and close to your mouth.
He's from Buffalo. You gotta cut him some slack.
Good football team on Sunday, though.
Beat my road.
And I do think that, you know, when either we recognize kids, I mean, we did various things for some of the sports teams that did really well, for the engineering group that went to the national type of thing. We've had scouts in when different teachers have kind of excelled. And it means a lot. I mean, it, it definitely means a lot. And it also provides a tie to community, which I think is really important. So, yeah, that's a great idea.
Great. All right, so that's
So we'll work on a list and get that circulated, and we can talk about it again after we're there.
And I think part of it, too, I was hoping to have, like, a, some of the scout troops and maybe, like, be able to lead the pledge
Yep.
and attempt to make that kind of a calendar of inviting, knowing who's doing what when.
Yeah, that's great. I love it. All right, so next on the agenda, we are talking about the MASC's letter to, Allison brought this to our attention. It's a, a letter in support of the rural school bill. And I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read it, and I wanted to get your thoughts. So I'm going to start down your mic. Did you get a chance to read the letter?
No, but I actually, I mean, I skimmed through it, but I know what a lot of this is, is about anyways. And this has been a, a thing that's been going on for a little while now. I, I think we should support this. I mean, I think it looks, it's clear that the, you know, that, it's clear to me that the only way, it seems to me, the only way for rural schools to keep up is to change their town, basically their characteristics of their towns, that they could have more of a tax base. And not every town wants to do that. You know, like, for example, you know, my wife and I moved down here because we like Pembroke. We don't want to turn it into Braintree, you know? So I think that it's necessary to get funding for, and to allow towns to keep, smaller towns like us to keep the characteristics that make us unique, I guess you'd say.
Yeah, I support signing on to this. They're facing, I think, similar things that we are here. We're, you know, it's, it's hard to fund, you know, the schools, from reading about it, like, things cost more in rural districts to, you know, keep up for students, so they're just not funded the same. And I think helping, I mean, a lot of our neighbors are considered rural districts, so I think it will help us, maybe in the long run, too, even though we're not considered a rural school district.
David?
Yes, I would be totally in favor of signing on. It's House Bill three, five, six, seven, Senate Bill two, three, eight, eight. A lot of the points were brought up that, you know, declining enrollment, limited tax base, you know, increased transportation costs, you know, kind of more ground to cover. They don't see any chance. And I say this respectfully to, you know, other cities and towns around the state. They're pouring money into Boston, and Lynn, and Lawrence, and Lowell, and places like that. These people need to get a fighting chance. And I think it's getting tougher and tougher. And I think we're probably somewhere in the middle, leaning more towards the rural side, certainly. But I think putting our names on this would be a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Patrick?
Did they define rural?
Yes, they did. They gave a link.
Let's step back.
There's a link in a list of towns. We're not one of them. But I think Plimpton is considered a rural town. But, you know, it's a lot.
But I think it does hit one of the things that we talk about all the time when we have representatives here, and we talk about during the budget cycle, is special education costs, and the fact that there seems to be no parameters for which those increase year over year. I know we are not as rural as Mohawk Trail, or Deerfield, or Sunderland, the, the school committees that have signed on at this point. But, you know, one special education move-in of a student is enough to skew our budget by a couple hundred thousand dollars. And we're talking about, you know, I know that we're not rural by definition, but that, that's enough to really affect what we're able to offer other students. And so I do think a lot of H three, five, six, seven talks about a legislative group looking at special education out of district placements, the funding and the financing of those, so.
Here's my fear, right? And I'm going to take a little bit of a, a counter viewpoint for a second. First of all, I think what they're doing is awesome. I think we need to do, we all need to do way more of it, because, as I've said for years now, the funding model is dramatically and grotesquely broken. And the only way it's going to get fixed is if it gets fixed on Beacon Hill. My fear is this. We have an existing funding model that skews toward the urban areas, which is why when you hear things like, oh, it's no big deal, we'll extend the day in Boston for, you know, half an hour, it's only seventeen and a half million dollars, and we're sitting here cutting out, you know, twelve dollars or twelve hundred dollars to make our budget work. That's one extreme. So my fear is if the funds go there, and then something like this draws funds, we're in the middle, and our resources are even further constrained. So on principle, I love it. I think it's a great thing. My fear, though, is if all of a sudden funds are, are then siphoned toward rural districts, which is why I asked the question, and they continue to fund at an urban level, we're left with an even smaller piece of the pie, and is not a concern.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question.
But I think, respectfully, Patrick, and I certainly agree and understand the point. But I think if we can get the ball and tide moving the other way.
I think
You know, right now, where everything keeps going this way, going this way, if we maybe pull some towards the rural side, I think we might be able to get a better shot at getting a piece of the pie than it thinks their status quo. So I think being your own advocate in this case would help us.
I think you might be right, David. I mean, I do. I just, I just want us to think about that for, you know, just kind of stop and pause and think about it for a second. I actually think if this is what it takes to break the Chapter Seventy funding model, which is purposely convoluted, and by the way, nobody understands it. They came here seven or eight years ago, the single worst meeting.
That woman quit.
And did she quit? No, she might have. The single worst meeting I have ever attended as a sitting school committee member, she was here for two and a half hours, and it was just painful. She couldn't answer any of the actual questions. She was trying to tell us the only thing that she wanted us to know. It was awful. So I, I do, I do lean toward what you're saying, David. I think this is actually a step in breaking the cycle. But we should recognize, for us, there's a risk, right? Right? But yes, I don't, I'm not against signing on to it, because anything to break that cycle, I think is good for us. But there's a risk for us.
You, you are right. There is a risk to it. But to me, what I, what I feel about this is that you're giving these rural, these rural towns a chance to get access to more funds without taking away their character, without cutting down all the forests and building more houses. And that could probably give us a basis to ask for more funds as well, I believe. You know, I think, like Dave said, it could just get the ball rolling. And, and also, you know, I mean, there's just too much money going into the cities and being spent frivolously and inefficiently. You know, I read, um, Boston Public Schools is in the paper almost every day for something that they're doing wrong. And they're, and the, the amount of money that they're spending is incredible. I mean, I've, I've read that their, their budget this year was upwards of three billion, with a B. But I've also read somewhere around 2.73 billion. I read 1.7 billion. Whatever it is, though, it's, it's got a B. It's ginormous. You know, and that money's not being spent efficiently. And I think any way we can get money out to smaller towns, and whether it includes us or not, I think it can benefit us somehow in the future.
Absolutely. Well, you know, I'm, I'm in agreement that I, I feel like we should sign it. I think it, it also gives an act of goodwill towards...
I, I do agree.
And I feel like if we sort of band together as towns for, I mean, we need, we need something to change.
Yeah, and the only way it's gonna change is if all the sitting committees that aren't in an urban district, no matter what it is, do stick together.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm good. I just want to make sure that we thought of both.
Well, I like that you play devil's advocate, though, honestly, so that we can think about, like, what could be the consequences, because it's a good idea to think about that stuff before we...
Absolutely.
Go along to something like this.
I, I also think, though, too, it may be a good time for us to reinforce via a letter to both our state senator and both of our representatives, our grave concern over the current funding model, in that Pembroke has challenges that, well, this may address them in some places, Pembroke's challenges individually need to be addressed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe include that we're signing, you know, we vote to include that.
Yeah, I'm happy to draft something for you.
That we're planning to sign on.
We've done it in the past, so I think it's...
I think we should do it as often as possible.
I agree. I, I absolutely agree.
Are you talking about the Chapter 70 funding and how we're...
Yeah, well, basically talk about our funding model, the unfunded mandates. And when you add up the unfunded mandates, it is a massive amount of money. Just as Erin said, the special education alone, we had one year that we had two people move in without a district placements. It was a half a million dollars. I mean, it's, those fundings are unbelievable. Transportation, you know, fully funding circuit breaker, there, there are so many things out there. But I, you know, we've got a couple of templates, but I do think we should get active in circulating those.
I think, I, I agree, and it seems, this seems to be an issue throughout the South Shore. You know, it's not just us, it's the model itself is, as you said earlier, it's just broken. You know, as, no towns are getting the, you know, the aid that they, that they should be getting from the state right now. Doesn't seem.
Okay, so then we will, we're all in support. Do we need a motion?
Okay, we should vote, and then I can go ahead and sign yours.
So, does some, do we have a motion to write and sign a letter in support of the Rural Schools Bill?
So moved. Second.
And Mike and David?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous.
Yeah, so this is a one-click, one-click sign-on, so I can just go in and click that you guys are, you don't have to draft a letter, you're just clicking as a signatory on the letter.
And it'll save Pembroke School Committee.
Yep.
And Erin, you'll take a swag at the other one?
Yeah.
Okay. And so approval of bill schedule, the warrants are being circulated, and consideration for approval for the school committee meeting minutes of September 5th. Do we have a motion?
I, I have one, sorry, one edit. So, in the Section A, under Visitors, it needs to say PAC 105, not Troop 105.
143.
No, on that second, the other part. Because it says how her daughter joined, was the first to join Troop 105, it needs to be PAC 105.
Got it.
The rest of it was fine.
So do we have a motion to approve the amended school committee meeting minutes of September 5th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Perfect. So, the moment you've all been waiting for. We are happy to have Ms. Mary Ellen Gates here, our pathway coordinator, as well as three students from the high school that have been participating in the pathways. They're gonna give you a bit of an overview and an update. We wanted to wait for Patrick to get here, since this is all new to you, so. They have done amazing things. I'm gonna let them share, but every time I hear an update, I'm blown away by what these, these students and what Mary Ellen have been able to accomplish in just, just over a year, not even.
Well, thank you, and thank you for having us. So I was planning on giving you a little bit of update of what's been happening and what we're doing for this coming year. And then I have three students who participated in a summer internship virtually, and they're gonna share their experiences. You guys might have to move back a little bit. So, I'm excited to announce we have all the five pathways up and running. So as you know, last year was our kickoff year, and we started with the business, computer science, and digital arts. And this year, we started with biomed, or we added biomed and engineering. And we've had a huge response, so I'll shield those numbers with you in a moment. Thank you. The internship really paid off.
We found the IT guy in the group.
I'm a business student, he's on IT. So, as a refresher, as you know, the goal of the pathway program is to ensure that our students are spending four years at Pembroke High, that those years are worthwhile, and when they graduate, that they have done coursework that is, makes them marketable. So whether they're heading to college or right into the workforce, they have something on their transcript that is tangible and something that will help them to move next step in their career. The pathway is made up of coursework, and it's also made up of an internship, or they have an opportunity to do a certification. So last year, we had Adobe, Photoshop, and Illustrator was the certifications for the digital arts kids. This year, for the computer science, we've added Java. And for the business pathway, we added Microsoft Office.
That's awesome.
Incredible, Robert, Patrick.
One of the things that we learned, we, when we rolled this out for the incoming ninth graders, as you know, ninth graders are required to take health and a PE requirement. We cannot change that, and we don't want to change that. So, what we've heard from the parents and the students is that, you know, we're only seven blocks in a day.
Only seven.
Only seven. So, they didn't have a lot of room in their schedule to choose electives. So, you know, they're coming in at ninth grade, they're nervous as it is, they're trying to make big decisions. So what we decided, because we heard feedback that said, you know, we're getting torn, we're not able to get all the electives that we want, we've decided to change from biomed and engineering, which are all year-long classes, to change it from a four-year requirement to a three-year requirement. So we can have a student coming in this year that's a ninth grade, they chose their electives, and they can reflect on it, and they can join biomed or engineering in 10th grade and still earn their designation by the time they graduate. So, and you're happy to ask questions as I go along. Questions?
Is that, does moving it from a four-year to a three-year, I don't know if dilutes the right word, but does it, I mean, are they getting what they need in order to truly be proficient?
I mean, I think that's the learning point that we have to go through. So for both biomed and engineering, this is the first year. So, over the summer, the two teachers who are teaching those classes went to, went away and learned the curriculum for year one.
Okay.
And then they'll learn for year two. So, as we go along, we'll have to find out, is there a big gap between year four and three? And as we're placing them in internships, we might even hear from the hospitals that we can see a difference in the students. And then maybe we need to go back and reflect to say, is this the right model?
And I assume the curriculum's something that, in each one of the pathways, is gonna evolve and shift?
Yes.
As, as we get further and further into it?
You know, if you go on the Program of Studies, or on the website, I have these beautiful maps I created for each pathway, they're gorgeous. But we haven't had a ninth grader go through all four years. So, we'll have to test it out, you know, and be flexible.
One other thing, too, is that Project Lead the Way did advise us that the three years was a really rigorous course load for students to do, and that the fourth year sort of capstone course that is offered by the Project Lead the Way people is a, is a great opportunity, and we fully intend to commit that, but may not be for everybody.
Got it.
So some kids may not do that capstone course, but maybe they'll do an internship instead, or they'll do, they'll choose perhaps to pursue a certification, so. Just a couple other things.
Got it.
So here are our numbers right now. So you can see, what's there, about 700 students at the school, and 171 of them are on a pathway. So that's pretty dramatic. We have 20 seniors this year, but you can see engineering and biomed were the big numbers of folks that, that they were interested in for the pathways. So I want to shift gears now to talk a little bit about internships. I think most of you were either at the celebration we had at the end of the year, and we had 16 students earn their designation as pathway scholars, and they either completed a certification or they did an in-person internship. And what that looked like, instead of going to school term four, they actually went to a job, and they had hands-on experience. And it was wonderful. And that model is great. But what I'm learning is if you looked at the numbers, 171 students, you know, we have 20 this year, next year we'll probably have 30, after that we'll probably increase to 40 and 50. You know, how are we gonna get all of these kids out on term four? How am I gonna find all these opportunities? So, term four will always be there, but I started to think, we gotta think outside the box to say, how can we look at internships maybe year-round, rather than just a one-time frame?
Could it be a summer thing, too?
You're leading into my, you stole my thunder. So through my research, I found this wonderful company called WBLA Work-Based Learning Alliance. They've actually been hired by the state of Massachusetts to find high school students credible internships that are paid. So, what they offered this summer, they offered both a 100-hour internship and a 30-hour internship. And they ranged from cybersecurity, data analytics, database management, and, you know, it, it was a variety of different things. What it included was, they were put, placed in a team, some teams were five or six Pembroke students, others were placed in a team, but they were working with students across Massachusetts. So think about that in a remote environment, where you don't even know the other folks, you're thrown into the fire, you know, just those employability skills of learning how to work with others was huge. What they had to do, they were given a product scope, they had deliverables each week, they had a weekly meeting with their mentor, they had a weekly meeting with their advisor from WBLA, and then I was harassing them for a weekly meeting with me, and they had to do journal entries and time cards. So as far as similar to when an in-person internship, when they were accountable to PHS standards, we, they had to do that all summer as well to get credit. And here are the students. Again, there was 10 of them, nine computer science students and one business student. So, one of the things I want to highlight about this and why it was so successful is if you don't have the pleasure of knowing these students, these are truly our stars at the school. They have academic strength. But the other thing that they all have, which I think is critical for me as I select people for a virtual opportunity, is they're all mature. They all can work independently. Again, they were representing Pembroke High School. So I wasn't talking with them every single day, I had to ensure that they were following through. So you need that maturity, I believe, for that virtual opportunity. So, this isn't gonna be, this is definitely going to be offered moving forward. I already have a calendar events for next, this calendar year for school that WBLA has already sent me. But it will be something that I will work with their existing teachers and myself to figure out who's the right fit. Okay? So we have three students, Jonathan, wanna raise your hand, Matt, and Jeff, and they're gonna share with you their internships and some of the skills that they learned through the process. So, first up is Jonathan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Roger Ethenam. I'm a senior, and I'm gonna be presenting a little bit about why we did what we did. So I was part of the 100-hour internship with Matt and a couple of other students from Pembroke High School. And we worked with this company called Signature Peace of Mind Advisors. It's led by a man named Kenneth Vignali, and they're an online cyber company that protects individuals and businesses that have lost their data in cyber attacks. And they also are starting now to focus on helping minors and children that were attacked in cyber crimes. So, one thing that we did a lot of focus on, our research on, was this thing called sextortion. So recently, there's been use of AI technology, especially deep fake technology, to create explicit content of children using like harmless photos, they're using that to generate explicit content and selling that on the black market, or extorting children for money. And we, we, the Department of Homeland Security and ICE are two organizations that help with this, and they've received millions of reports. And there's really nothing you can do once the images are created, because once it's on the black market and sold everywhere, you can't take something off the internet. So, that's what we're working on, how to report these people, how to even prevent them from being created, and how to tag these so parents are aware what's going on with their children, even if the child's not aware. So we researched that. And what our job was as a team was, we wanted to create a website where we can aggregate news stories, so parents could stay up to date on all the newest forms of attack that these people are using to target children. And we also wanted to create a website that like parents can use to, to, you know, show us a little bit about ourselves and what they could do. So I think the next slide should have more information on that. So this was, these are two screenshots from the website we created as a team. The fir, the first screenshot is the homepage of our website, so that has some resources and links that go to the FBI, the Department of Homeland Security, and ICE, and some statistics on several thousands of children every year that are targeted in these online attacks. And then we have phone numbers that parents can call if their child was a member of the attack, or websites that they can go to, to report the attacker. And then we have all these different links on our websites with different information, who we are. We have a Meet the Team page, where we have all of us that worked on the website, and we have our favorite foods on there, so you know, the people can know what our favorite foods are. And we have a little, like, overview of why, who we are and why we created this. And then that second screenshot, that is a working prototype of the cyber news application that we made. We programmed it ourselves using HTML, I think. So, that is, it takes news stories from the internet about cyber attacks, and it filters out the ones that will be especially important to parents to know, because I know every parent has about five news apps on their phones and gets 100 notifications a day. So, these ones filter out computer science stories, especially related to children, so that way they can stay up to date. And even if they don't understand all the words, like, this helps them specifically know what they need to know to have a conversation with their children. And we believe that current cybersecurity apps and websites exist, but they all have some sort of form of monitoring the child's online activity, but we know that doesn't work, because if you tell a child not to do something, it's gonna do it anyway. So, we believe that this starts a conversation between the child and the parent on how they can work together to manage what the child's putting online and how he or she can stay safe. So now Jeff April is gonna talk about his internship.
Hi, hello. I'm Jeff April.
Wait a minute, hold on. I need IT support again.
He's got the tech.[1704.42]
Yeah, I hit it three times.
I'm Jeff April, and I also did another 100-hour internship. For my internship, I did data storytelling, and for that internship, I worked with one other student from Pembroke High, as well as a few other students from across the state. So for this internship, I worked with my mentor named Mr. Jonathan Hill, and he was part of the group Keep Charlotte Beautiful, or KCB. And so what KCB is about is, they're a government-funded nonprofit organization that aims to keep the city of Charlotte, North Carolina, clean, and they do this by having volunteers around the city go out and pick up trash. And so one of KCB's tasks is to have these forms sent out to each cleanup where the list, the number of volunteers, the number of pounds of trash picked up, the date, and a few other statistics about those cleanups. And so what you can see there on the right of the screen, those are some examples of that data that they've collected, of all the information. And so what we found, that that data stretched for thousands of different points. And so our job as interns was to analyze and interpret that data, being quantitative, and turn it into qualitative, where we can try and tell a story and make that data more meaningful to the organization.
Jonathan, you can just take over.
And on the next slide here, you can see what we actually needed to submit for our internship, and this was both research and data visuals for our project. Now for research, we needed to research other organizations similar to KCB, so then that meant finding other organizations across the nation or even worldwide that would work with cities to try and keep them clean, and would display their statistics different ways, affect social media in their local community, as well as different methods for displaying this large amount of data that we have. And for data visualizations, our group chose to create graphs and infographics to display this data. And on the right here, you can see two examples of graphs we created, the top one being busiest months, the times when volunteers would actually go out and pick up that trash, and the bottom one being the groups that participated in the cleanups, for example, governments, student, or even nonprofits. And I think one of the meaningful points about these graphs is that our mentor had actually told us after the interview that he and his organization were able to use these graphs directly from our presentation onto his work, and he mentioned like things just like setting them up professionally with the same colors as the KCB organization, the green, the blue, the gray, the text being formatted well. That really helped him to use it directly from us to him, and I think that really made it worthwhile for us and his organization. And now transition to Matt here, who'll give a few points about what we all took away from this experience.
All right, well, thank you, Jeff, for the introduction. And so I'm going to talk about the key takeaways and what we learned from this experience. So from what Johnny's internship and my internship, we learned how to design and create websites, and also from Jeff's internship, we learned how to interpret and analyze data and make it into visual graphs that people can easily see and interpret. Additionally, we learned how to use online tools to manage team meetings, which included tools such as Google Meets, Zoom, iMessage, FaceTime, et cetera. And we also worked in a virtual environment, which definitely had some pros and cons. A con was unfortunately, we didn't have that human contact, which some people, well, we didn't really like that much, but we definitely did like, though, the asynchronous working that we were able to do, as this allowed us to manage our time conflicts effectively. As I know a lot of us on the, a lot of the interns were part of the robotics team, and we went down to Florida for a robotics competition. And obviously, if we had an in-person internship, we would have had to choose, but thankfully, since this was a virtual, we were able to manage our time effectively and be able to do both, which we definitely really enjoyed. And finally, also, sorry, Jeff also, as he talked about, was able to make new connections and friends from different students across all of Massachusetts, as he was able to work and make new connections. And finally, we also learned new presentation and speaking skills using online tools such as Google Slides, as you can see right now, Zoom, and Canva. And so overall, we definitely like to thank Ms. Gates for allowing us this amazing opportunity, and definitely would recommend that she continues it in the future so that more future Pembroke students can enjoy.
Wow. Thank you. Three, I mean, great job. First of all, I have to say, all three of you spoke so well, so eloquently, and like, and this is, these are not just, these are really weighty projects that you did, I mean, that's pretty incredible, the work that you did, and you should all be very proud of yourselves. I mean, that's amazing. So this website that you created for parents, is it, do we have a link to it somewhere? How can we, what is the?
So yes, actually, there is a link, it's actually a website. I obviously don't have the link with me.
Yeah, we could send it out.
That is absolutely amazing work. I'm really impressed with all of you. That's great.
And it's kind of cool, because if you go on the, where it had the news stories, they programmed that's constantly updating. So the stories today are going to change tomorrow, it's going to change on the next day. So it's current information.
Which is like, an amazing thing that can be done, that it's automatically searching the web, like, nobody's actually doing it, it's what's, it's a bot doing it for you, right? So.
So the website is a prototype. The picture showed, we used HTML software to code it, so if you want to host a website domain, you have to pay for that. So we made like, a free prototype version, but we can send that out and it'll have kind of like a trial that parents can use, but if this is something that we want to send out like, to the masses, I think we would have to look into buying a domain for that, because you would have to buy the name of the link of the website people want to go to. We use Google Sites because it's free with our Google Suite, but if we wanted, like, especially the program part, I think we would have to move into deeper programming on that.
Got that. Yeah, that's incredible. Great job.
And this group of students, that was new to them, and they didn't respond to me, oh, we don't know how to do that, so we're choosing something else. They said, no, we're up for a challenge, we want to design this. So I'm going to spend time to learn this HTML and how to program. So it's pretty impressive.
Really is. That's great. Does anybody have any questions for these amazing kids?
I don't know if I have any questions, but just the amount of dedication, or I guess the concentration that you could, due to, you know, when you, when you talk about being in the robotics program and traveling for that, and then still having, the discipline is the word I was trying to say, the discipline to stick to this and still do some of the work you needed to do for the internship is, that's something that people wouldn't normally think about, but that's a big deal. I mean, you're out of town, you know, there's a temptation to treat it like a vacation. I might have done that a few times. So I, you know, I give you, I give you a lot of props for, for having that, for being able to do that, and to, and for being able to carry on a virtual internship as well. That takes a lot of discipline, working, so I'm guessing you're working from home, sort of, or is it, yeah, that's not, there's a lot of distractions, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do, so.
It was, the 100 hours was four weeks, so it was about 25 hours a week, and then the 30 hours, that was, what they did for the, was a cybersecurity project, they called it, so they did a six-hour IBM skill-based online learning course, and after that six hours, they did a three weeks, so it was about seven hours a week they had to do for the cybersecurity project.
Yeah, I just want to say how awesome it is you guys being able to speak to us and have no notes in front of you, like, that's like, really impressive, like, that part alone, so. I know a lot of adults that can't do that, so, thank you for, you know, what you guys have done, and look forward to seeing what you guys do this year with the rest of your program.
Awesome.
I will tell you, in seven years on the committee, I don't think I've seen a presentation quite this good, and it never, no, no. Well, I have a very important question. Why don't you guys fix my printer at home? I can't print a damn thing, but that's a story for a different day. No, it is, in seven years, you just watch these presentations get better, I, I look at this, and I, I'm very proud of the parents, Mary Ellen, outstanding job, but you look and say, look at the kids we're producing, and I don't think people see enough of this. But I am absolutely wowed. I mean, when I was in high school, the biggest thing I could think of was making sure I'd go, you know, to the truck out front to get my lunch, you know, that was the biggest thing on my agenda.
I was really worried about you.
No, so again, gentlemen and Mary Ellen, impressive to the parents that are here, wow, you know, you raised some good kids, you've done an amazing job, you should be very proud. So thanks for coming in.
Just real quick before I get to you guys, who are the parents out there? Just raise your hand. So my hat is off to you guys for raising incredibly young men, seriously. So guys, I'm the chief financial officer of a medium-sized organization that's pretty complex. The people that report to me do this stuff every day, they don't present as well as you did, and your color coordination and font coordination is something I am all about. What you did, it is more than just real-world skills, and watching you guys present, honestly, coming and presenting to a bunch of adults that you don't know in front of a body, a government body, is nerve-wracking, it's scary. It didn't show at all. Like, you guys are very, very good at this, you clearly have a level of maturity and a level of capability that, to your point, man, we are doing a good job producing fine young men, and I'm sure young women. My hat's off to you, really, congratulations, thank you. Yeah, thank you, and thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, one last plug, if you know anyone that's looking for an intern. I have 20 students this year, so please email me, any companies.
Do they have to be in Pembroke?
No. So I just made this, last week, I made a great connection with Signature Healthcare, and that for our biomed, so we're not even looking for them for three years, but I convinced them to maybe start to come into our biomed classes and doing guest speakers, so we set the foundation, so in three years, they'll be ready for some interns. But all the seniors have cars, or most of them do, so we need a broadened.
Let's chat.
Yes.
Seriously, yeah, let's chat.
Perfect. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Impressive.
Super impressive.
That was amazing. I have it on tape that I did click the button.
I saw you clicked it.
Sure.
I saw you clicked it.
Next up in my report is a review of the Tech Scorecard, so you have in your packet the Tech Scorecard that we like to update quarterly with you guys. I thought it would be a good time to just kind of show you where we are in the world of technology, as well as how we can use this tool to do some of the reporting back to you guys, as opposed to doing formal presentations about everything. So I thought getting your eyes on the Tech Scorecard might be a good way to talk about maybe how we give you updates on your goals quarterly, and what steps and achievements have been made in that realm. But I do think this is one of those things that goes in your packet, you guys can look it over, if you have questions, you can ask questions, but you know, we're not going to give a quarterly tech presentation like with Brandon Hall or anything, so this is one way that we capture data. The tech ones always look more interesting because there's lots of colors, but.
It's very pretty.
These guys might be able to help, too.
And you do wonderful presentations, by the way.
Yeah, did that hermit dance a little bit. It's fine. Do you guys have any questions about technology, the scorecard, where we're at this quarter? So you'll get one probably in December, March, and then the end of the year.
I don't think I have any, any questions at all. I know Brandon does a really good job, so.
Patrick.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Do you see the color coordination here?
I did.
Yeah.
I saw the school colors, I saw it.
Okay. Next in your packet, you have, for consideration of approval, three overnight or out-of-state field trip requests from DECA. So these are the same three that you get each year. One is for the first round of DECA, DECA, sorry, that was, there's an R there for some reason, DECA qualifications, that happens in, at the Seagres and Falmouth, then the students that qualify move on to the Copley Marriott, and then the final group that move on to the national level, it is in Anaheim, California this year. So again, obviously, the numbers of students are estimates at this point, as we don't know what the, where they'll land with the competitions, so.
Can we approve them together?
Yes, you can do them all together.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the overnight out-of-state field trip requests for DECA?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
The last thing in my packet is, this is not beautifully color-coded, I apologize, but now I know the standard, is a draft of the FY25 budget calendar, more of a process timeline. This was just for you all to get a first look at, budget sub is meeting tomorrow at 2:30 to kind of finalize some of those pieces, but I wanted to get some input from everybody if there was something like that we blatantly missed, or an area that you'd want us to kind of put on the calendar to dive deeper in as we get into the budget cycle. As you see, the budget cycle in Pembroke now starts in October, which is excellent. Never too soon. Next year, Sue will have it starting in September, and before you know it, we'll be on a July 1 start date, so. There are some joint budget subcommittee meetings in there, that's the joint subcommittee that has existed in the past with the Select Board. They did, I think, vote at their, their meeting last Wednesday to identify the two representatives, so as soon as I get that actual information from Sabrina.
They actually have voted already. It's, I think it was the meeting before that, it was Tracy and John.
Yeah, I think it was last Wednesday, Sabrina said they were put on the agenda, but we will get a meeting set up so we can start talking.
Yep, okay, perfect.
Can I ask just a question on the joint subcommittees? I know we did this before. What is the overall purpose? Is it educating the Board of Selectmen about our processes? Is it just making sure that we're sharing information so we're all on the same page? I just want to make sure you're going in, going to have an idea.
So, you know, one of the problems identified in my tenure here is that Bill Shinnard was not really, he didn't know what was going on with the school committee, and honestly, there weren't any discussions with Aaron about the budget process going, and how much we were going to need, not even in a maintenance of effort conversation.
Yep.
And so also, you know, and, you know, since you've been, since the last time you were on the committee, you know, obviously, there's been some changes, now we have a town manager, we have the, you know, so.
We have the internet, too, and we have all this stuff.
Running water.
Everyone's got comfortable rolling fast.
I couldn't wait to use that line, I had to do it.
Nothing to do with Patrick.
Hey, my horse is still parked outside.
So, so my goal was, I want to, so that I found, I scheduled meetings one-on-one with a few different Select Board members, and I found out they had no idea what was going on. And so I want to get the process started earlier, make sure they know, make sure we can get our cut, you know, at least that they know what our, what we need, because they didn't even know, so.
No, I think it's great, I just want to make sure I had an idea going.
Yeah.
I think a lot of it's just opening the lines of communication, so they know where we're coming from, and we know where they're coming from and all that.
Right, and I feel like that board has turned over a little bit, and they're still trying to figure out where their place in the budget process is, because even in the time I've been here, it used to live mostly in advisory, then it moved back to the Select Board, now it seems to live with the town, the town manager. So I think they're still trying to get some base level knowledge as well, and I think anything we can do to educate them about what we need and our timelines just helps us in the long run.
I will say, and it's just something that we should all think about, kind of going into the process, is, you know, the way the Board of Selectmen handled the budget is different than how we handle it, right? So, you know, you kind of already see that the calendar coming out, and it's a bit of a structured process, it's, these teams are going to come in and present to us what they need and what their needs are. Aaron's going to do a maintenance of effort budget, and it's inevitably going to be two and a half million dollars more than sort of what we think we have at any given point in time. And I don't say that nonchalantly, but it just, it's like that every year.
It's how it is, yeah.
As we get into the process, we figure it out. But we, Vince Cogliano said this a couple of weeks ago, right, I think we do more of a bottoms-up type of approach. The town does far more of a top-down type of approach. So I think to your point, Sue, just sharing and educating the benefits of those bottoms-up components, right, I think could be really worthwhile. And then, you know, it takes the mystery out, right, it's like, hey, this is the number, this is plus or minus a little bit, it's probably going to be the number, the earlier we can communicate that, the better.
Absolutely, absolutely.
My thought was it always takes a surprise element away, you know, all of a sudden you sit down, and you know, April and May, and people go, where'd that come from? What's that number? It's like, you're telling people, hey, here's the enrollment number, here's, you know, chapter 70, you know, so.
And I think, to the extent that we can kind of be ambassadors of the type of budgeting that we do here, it's better for the town, right? So we may be talking to them soon in our budget sub, in their joint budget sub, but as you are talking to different members of the Select Board, being able to explain to them, maybe do it a little different, right? Might work for you guys, it might not work for you guys, but it's always good to kind of get that out there and share those experiences.
Well, I did learn, too, that Bill speaks with the department heads of the town, not Aaron, but like the other, you know, the people.
I speak to Bill.
You speak to him.
Don't thank him.
But he starts the conversations, he said, in like October, November, to see where they are, so I think if he's doing that anyways, we should be included in the conversation, so.
Sure, I agree. Totally agree.
So, but, in any case, this budget calendar looks great, as far as I'm concerned. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions, or something you want to add?
We're meeting tomorrow.
We're meeting tomorrow.
You know, the only comment I will make is, I'm actually going to reach out to our legislative members and give them the date while in advance, and that way they respectfully can't say we didn't know about it, whatever, we're telling them about a date in February, so I think they should be able to clear their calendar for us.
Yeah. Good. All right.
Next up is subcommittee and liaison updates, you'll notice the new word liaison.
Yes.
Perfect. So policy sub continues to meet regularly for our revision of the larger policy manual, but as other things come up, we do talk about those as well, so one thing that was. that was on the agenda for us to kind of go back over again was Policy IKFBR, which is Graduation Dress. That was something that was amended in August of 2022, after a series of meetings that started in April of 2022. But there was some concern at the committee level that the decision that was made in August wasn't necessarily what was, where they wanted to move forward with. So we thought we'd take another look at it. For those of you that weren't part of the committee when that discussion happened, you'll remember that Mark and I brought to EdSub the conversation regarding criteria for cords. You know, in the past, organizations would request of the school committee the right to give cords to students in what we would assume were some sort of honor society. But as time went on, there were a couple of groups that were granting cords that there was no academic component to. In addition, if you all, as the school committee, or Pembroke High School, as the school, is not the grantor of the cord, we don't have really any leeway and discipline records and that type of stuff. So we came to you all with a conversation regarding, you know, should there be criteria, yes or no? That initial conversation then led to seven meetings over the course of six months to talk about this. It went to EdSub, it went to Policy Sub a couple of times. It came to the full committee in April. In April, the committee asked Policy Sub to go back and come up with a minimum GPA for all students that were receiving cords. Policy Sub at that time wasn't able to get there, trying to kind of figure out the best way to come out at this. So they did not make a recommendation for a minimum GPA. So in your packet, you have a copy of IKFBR. Obviously, it's a redline version. So what's in black was what was approved in August of 2022. What is in red is what Policy Sub, which met last week, is recommending. This Policy Subcommittee did land on a minimum GPA requirement for cords to be worn at graduation, and also that the cords are given out by Pembroke High School. So not an individual advisor, not an individual National Honor Society, so that students that are receiving cords in their graduation cap and gown packet have met the requirements that we've set forward. Again, it's just a first read for you guys to get some ideas on it. Obviously, if you have a question, the GPA is set at 3.7, which is the GPA that is spelled out in the student handbook in relation to National Honor Society. We went back and forth over a couple of different ways to go about this. But if we are defining overall academic achievement as a 3.7 for National Honor Society, it should be that for all. And so that's kind of where Policy Sub landed. Allison and Sue, if I missed anything?
Yeah. And so, you know, the other piece of it is, it has to be a nationally recognized honor society. It can't just be, you know, some local, you know, it has to be something. And it has to be approved by, you know, administration and school committee.
So following changes to this policy, we then be, we would then be making a recommendation of a change to the student handbook. So the high school student handbook is where some of this is spelled out. So once the policy is kind of in its final form, we would be making a revision to the student handbook.
And I assume it wouldn't be this graduation, but the next one?
So this graduation right now, the current policy, if you choose to stick with it, is just the only cords that are worn are National Honor Society and the top 10% of the class. I think there's some appetite to make this change for this year.
There is.
If we made a handbook revision, we would need students and parents to sign off again on the handbook revision.
I will say, you know, when I first looked at this, and I saw the military sashes crossed out before I got to the sashes there, I almost had a stroke.
We thought it made sense to separate, to separate cords from sashes. It was a true separate conversation.
I will say, one thing that we do here in Pembroke, and I'm incredibly proud of it, we recognize the men, you know, men and women that are going to be going into the service at every graduation. And I think any of those young people that have decided to give their service to their country deserve the absolute opportunity. So thank you for just calling it out separately. But yeah, I was a little concerned when I saw the stroke.
Yeah, just separating the two.
Yeah, it makes total sense, but yeah.
Yeah, from, you know, talking to parents of students, you know, I think this is an important change that we need to really strongly consider, because it affects, it affects a lot of kids. That, you know, and I think spelling out, you know, the two main parts of this being that it has to be, you know, administrative-approved, nationally-recognized honor society, and then also having the overall academic GPA that, you know, fits our kind of overall mission as a committee and town, our school, you know, school committee and also schools. So I think it doesn't change anything with, you know, the kids being able to decorate their cap. It doesn't change, you know, any of the sashes at all, and separating it out of the cords, which I think just clarifies. I think, I'd hope people reading this policy will know what is expected and how, you know, that there will be, you know, I think it will ease some things, having it all come as one, you know, like having the cords come with their cap and gown. I think that will eliminate some confusion on award nights and whatnot as well.
I do have one question, though. Interestingly enough, probably not the thing that you thought would be asked, but why do we not have white gowns? Why are they all blue?
Sorry, we're not on the committee, but we went to a single-color gown two years ago.
Why?
It's so that students don't need to select whether they'd like a blue or a white gown, that all students are wearing a blue gown. So they polled the students, we shared student data.
The students wanted to do that?
Yeah.
Do we still give roses to the young women?
We do. Do we give roses to anyone that would like a rose?
So, so since we're still on the subject, I want to get our student representatives' opinion on offering cords for other honor societies, other than National Honor Society. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think we should definitely offer.
So Lauren, we didn't tell you, the microphone works for the people at home, not for the people in the room. So it seems like, seems like it's broken, but it's really working.
Yeah. So I think we should offer cords for anyone who makes an achievement in like a honor society. Like I know, last year, when this like came out, I know a lot of people who are like in the music department or theater, they were like upset that they couldn't wear their cords for the Thesbian National Honor Society. And I think that like, no matter, even if it's not academic, students who put a lot of effort and go above and beyond should be able to show that at graduation, even if they don't excel in like academics, if they excel in music. I think they should be able to like show that they've put like above and beyond work in there.
So how do you feel about the 3.7 GPA for?
Would that be for, like, all students?
All. Yeah. For cords.
For cords. Just to wear the cord at graduation.
The sashes would be separate, like those are separately than a cord.
So even if you're part of a honor society, if you have like a 3.6, you would not be able to wear it?
Right.
I'm not too sure about that, because.
So this is, so this is, Lauren, you understand the process. So when something's a first read, it's there, it's kind of the first time the school committee's talking about it. They'll talk about it again before they vote on it. So if this is something you want to kind of talk to your friends about, get some input about, they're happy to hear more feedback. I know you're seeing it for the first time right now, and they're putting you on the spot, so.
Yes. I mean to put you on the spot. I really genuinely want your opinion, because we really struggled with how we could make this fair to everybody, but still have an academic component. And because we really want to celebrate academic achievement, so.
I feel like a 3.7 is harder to get. So maybe, like, I do see the like usefulness of having like a GPA minimum, but maybe one that's a little bit lower. So it's like, you still have to put a lot of effort and like go above and beyond. But 3.7 is like, not that many students have that or above that. So it's cutting out a lot of people who like put their all and just haven't reached it, I feel like.
Would it be possible, so I'm going to tag on to that a little bit, Lauren, right? Because what I think Lauren's very nicely trying to say is, it's great, but, right? So, and you said it, I think, very eloquently, right? If you're in an honor society, like a Thesbian honor society, you know, your focus is in that given area. And although your academic achievement may not be at a 3.7, you're still showing a dedication to your craft that you think would be good to be sort of recognized. I wonder if, because the NHS requirement is a 3.7, that for the NHS cords, you have it at that, but maybe consider something slightly lower for other nationally-recognized honor societies is maybe a compromise solution. So you still have academic achievement being required, but it's something maybe not as stringent as what the NHS requirement is. Because every kid's not going to make NHS, right? But you may have kids that go to states or go to nationals with vocals or voice and are still in a nationally-recognized honor society. So just something to think about.
The one thing that I think we talked about at the Subcommittee was that we don't want, like, if a kid's failing a class or two.
I think that's different.
But, but how do we not, like, their GPA could still be, like, if we lower it to, like, I don't know, but 3 point something else, they could potentially still be getting, you know.
Right. You could be getting a C in English and an A in honors chamber singers and have a GPA of 3.5. So are we celebrating academic achievement as a C in English? Or, so I think that's, that's where we got hung up, that's where we got hung up last year.
That's how we came up with at least a 3.7.
Yeah. But in the same token, right? I could be taking three AP classes and doing what I need to do. Maybe it's a B, a B-plus there, and have a C in gym, or have a C in something else, and I could still have a 3.7, because you can have over a 4.0, right? So I think, I just think you're, you're raising a really good point, Lauren. And I just, so, and again, it's a first read, right? I just think we need to think about it, kind of to back that around. I think the achievement number needs to be a reasonable number to show that we're truly celebrating academic success, but maybe one that brings in students in a more holistic way.
Yeah.
What about, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I think a lot of students feel like, like the ones I've talked to at least, because even though I wasn't on like here, I feel like a lot of students did talk about it because I knew a lot of seniors. And I feel like some students felt that, like, we were, like, as all the schools were valuing just like strictly academics, like how good you are in history and math, rather than how good you are in art or computer science or any of the other honor societies. So I felt, I think, a lot of students felt like they were being unappreciated, or like undervalued for all of their like work they put into it.
That makes sense, yeah. It's a really good point.
What about?
I just, before you speak, I just want to say, we're going to get to you, but we're going to have the committee talk first, then I'll come, have you come up, if that's okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So colleges now are looking for more well-rounded students when they're, when they're going through their, you know, going through the applications and everything. You know, so that obviously includes arts and sports and all that. And I understand that you want to, that we want to make this be something that's got to be earned and special. It's not just for, for anyone. But I think she does have a good point about some of the kids that are in like the honor societies for theater or any of that. What if, you know, we could look at it this way of possibly, and this is something to think about, lowering the GPA, but at the same time having, they have to maintain a minimum grade, as in like you can't get anything below a B or something like that.
Which is something we talked about when we were meeting last week.
I thought that was a first thought.
No, we talked about it.
Very smart.
And this is why Subcommittee work is hard, by the way.
The one thing I just want, I don't want this current policy to, I want this to like be discussed so that we can have a policy.
Yeah.
Because the current policy, I feel, is completely unfair to the, to the students. So, you know, working the numbers, you know, I, I don't, I feel fairly strongly about the 3.7, but I understand the reasonings, you know. But I guess I see this in cords as like an academic achievement. Whereas, I don't know if, I can't remember, because I've only attended one now, but if in the, what's that called? If the program, they have.
The pathway scholars.
If they show some of the achievements for the different, you know, music and, you know, arts.
Right. So there's still celebration of all those individual accomplishments. So there's awards night, there's designation in the program. Each of the honor societies, whether it's computer science, or the Triumph Music, or even the Thesbian Troop, has a separate night also celebrating their students. All of that would still exist. What we're talking about is, how do you earn the ability to wear the cord at graduation? We all talked ad nauseam last year about what is graduation, a celebration of the cumulative accomplishment of graduating from high school. Everybody there has met that bar. And so really being thoughtful about, for, for what reasons are we singling kids out on that day where the cumulative accomplishment is the same thing? And I think that's where we got stuck last year on, if we're, if you as a committee are defining academic achievement as a 3.7 to be a National Honor Society, and you, there's more to National Honor Society than just academics. There's leadership, there's character, there's, there's all the pillars. You know, how are we then making a case for why it would be something else for others? And I think, you know, we had great conversations last year, we had great conversations this year. You know, I, we want to land in a place where it's in the best interest of all kids. We don't want kids to feel left out, whether they have one cord, five cords, or no cord. And, you know, just keeping that overall vision of that day, which is how the conversation started. What is the vision of graduation? Just keeping that in mind as we kind of bat back and forth what the options are.
So, so one of the things, you know, we landed on 3.7. For me, it was a compromise because I can't find, I couldn't find a workaround to make it lower, you know, for, you know, other honor societies. So for me, it's, so if somebody has an idea, I'm very open to that. So, but I would like to, I really feel strongly that we need to have other cords for, I mean, especially like, I see like the computer science kids come up, you saw them, they're brilliant kids. And, you know, they deserve to have a cord for their honor society, you know, or.
Right. Just for parameters, when we talk about the top 10% of the class, in the past eight years, the top 10% of the class on GPA has never gone below a 4.2.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not surprised by that.
You know, 3.7, when I, I mean, the most you could get when I was in high school was a four. This five scale's amazing, I totally get it. But, you know, there's, there's a large group of students that hit a 3.7. They're not all National Honor Society students because there's so many other pieces to that application process and a commitment that you're making to that. But a good portion of our student body is able to achieve a 3.7.
Why don't, I'm going to throw out just a suggestion. We'll take it as a first read tonight, right? I think that's something that we can all talk to parents about, talk to students about, think about, do some research on. If you would be willing to talk to your colleagues in the high school.
I'll send you a version of it electronically.
That would be great.
It would, I, I think hearing from you would be great, right? But we can at least accept it for a first read, and then maybe kind of debate it and move it forward either at our next meeting or the one after that. Just to your point, if we're going to do it for this graduation, we ought to do it soon.
Soon, exactly, yeah.
And I think having, I guess, and also like letting people know they can email their thoughts, too, that would be, you know, if the students can't make the next meeting or the parents can't make the meeting, that would be an equally good way to communicate with us.
I do think, though, for the record, what you have here is like 90% of the way there. And I think having a number in a GPA is important, because to your point, this is about reaching a level of academic qualification and achievement that we should be celebrating. And I think celebrating that success is important. So, and just got to figure out what the number is.
Any thoughts, David?
No, actually, I'd be interested to hear the young lady's thoughts.
Yes, okay, come on up.
Hi again, I'm Paige Graziano. I'm curious, the cords you're discussing, are all the cords for all the honor groups the same color? No.
No.
Would it be possible, something to consider, to stick with that 3.7, but be able to say, if you're in the Thesbian Society, that your classes in that category have to be a 3.7?
Right, which is what the criteria for most of the national organizations is. So for computer science, for example, you have to have a B or better in computer science to meet their bar to earn a cord. What we're saying is, to get the cord and wear it at Pembroke High School's graduation, you need a cumulative 3.7. So each of the honor societies, the Thesbian Troop is the only one that we've had cords that doesn't have an academic component to it. But Triumph, Computer Science, our National Honor Society, they all have a piece where the courses in that discipline need to meet a certain bar.
Okay. And so those students receive those cords, but then the question would be whether they could wear them at graduation. They would still be receiving them?
Correct. But you can only wear at graduation what is.
Is approved.
But, so when we give you your cap and gown, the cords that can be worn at graduation would be in there. So the, the managing of the GPA and who has a clean discipline record would all be done by the administration of, at the high school.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right.
So I'll move to accept Policy IKFBR as a first read.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to the fun work of Policy Subcommittee. In your packet, you have Section C. So Section C is General School Administration. We have only two current policies in Section C, CBI, which we're suggesting revisions. which we're suggesting revisions to, in CH, which is policy subcommittee, is not suggesting any revisions to. But there's a whole host of new policies on there for a first read. So those are all in red in your packet. Again, this is a first read for you all. Nothing crazy there. As we started to talk about section C, we thought some of these things, when you read them, do feel a little bit like explication of the obvious, but it's important for them to exist somewhere in writing, in case somebody in, you know, Antarctica is Googling our manual and is wondering, what do we do? Does the school have a district annual report? We all know that the town files an annual report and there's a school section in it, but where does that knowledge live? And it doesn't live anywhere in our policy manual right now, so.
So move to accept policy section C, first reads as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? It's unanimous.
And now we're back to policy section B. So you took this as a first read on September fifteenth, I mean, September fifth, sorry, it's the nineteenth. Obviously, there's a whole host of rescind and recode and revisions that were in there. I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it. If you want to vote tonight, you can always push it off to the next meeting if you'd like, if you didn't get a chance to go through it all. It's a thick packet.
There's going to be enough coming up that.
You may not want to move it to the next one because there's.
If everybody's had a chance to look at it, I would make a motion to approve section B as a second read. Am I doing that right?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that gives us like two weeks, two meetings.
So you just took these all as a?
Second read.
An approval, the second read.
I didn't have any approval. Sorry.
There's no such thing as a third read, Patrick.
Well, there is a final approval and it usually starts clotting.
BGB means you suspend your policy about policy adoption, which gives you the timeline. Okay, next up, the education subcommittee met last Wednesday?
Yep.
Yep. So at one of the meetings, I think in May or so, May or June, at the full committee level, we talked a little bit about the pathways. It was great that this synced up with the same time that Mary Ellen and the students were presenting, just around some of the criteria and some interest of committee members at the time, to take a look at those criteria and make sure that we are inclusive and students that want to be part of the pathways can be part of the pathways. I think, you know, jump in Mike and Allison if I'm missing it, but, you know, we do a tremendous job of offering things at Pembroke High School, to the point where every kid can't take everything all of the time. And at some point, you do need to make a selection. What we ran into for our incoming ninth graders and which facilitated some of the conversation around that four-year requirement going to a three-year requirement is some of our students that are, have selected to be in band, that's also a full-year elective. So there's no time in your course schedule to take band and intro to engineering. So we did take a look at those students that had conflicts. Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen worked with those students. There is going to come a point in your high school career where you're not going to be able to be a pathway scholar and take band. So pathway scholar doesn't mean you can't take courses in the pathway. It just means you're not going to get the 18 credits, I think some of them are 16, some of them are 18, in that coursework to get the scholar designation on your transcript. But the committee talked about it, the subcommittee talked about it. I don't think we were suggesting any changes to the current criteria or requirements. We did talk a little bit about what decision-making looks like for a 13-year-old in eighth grade, having a 13-year-old eighth grader. You all have had one too, I think, most of you. Not yet, Mike, but you're going to. I don't know if my son knows that he wants to be a biomedical engineer or a musician at 13. So what can we do for those kids? Because biomedical and, and engineering are two kind of buzzwords, right? And when we polled kids, those were the two areas where kids at the middle school were the most interested. So as we go through this year and into next year, part of that STEM rotation that students go through will give them exposure to some of this curriculum, so that they are making an informed decision. Do I like biomedical more than I like playing the flute? And can I be actually, am I actually making a choice that makes sense for me? So I do think pushing some of that back into the eighth grade STEM rotation helps a bit. I also think in listening to Mary Ellen outside of this presenting, presentation, because she presents pretty much weekly at some different events, talking about, I think there was some misconception with current ninth, upcoming ninth graders that you had to pick a pathway. The first run at the schedule, I think, had two, 200 of the 204 freshmen taking a pathway. I think they went home like, Mom, I have to pick a pathway. So I, you know, doing a better job educating students of, you know, what the pathway means, that you can still take business writing even if you're not in the business pathway and that kind of stuff. So Mary Ellen's already started to kind of plan for what that looks like when she's meeting with the, the middle school students. We've started to talk about exposure to the curriculum, but there does come a point when you, you know, in order to meet our graduation requirements and the state graduation requirements, that there just physically isn't enough space in the schedule to take everything. So that's kind of where we're at.
So, so this, I mean, Mike, I was the one who brought up the concern. For those who weren't on the committee, it's just that I feel like it's difficult to take band or chorus away from like a, you know, in-school concert choir or band, because I feel like music is part of being a well-rounded student, whether it's chorus or band. And we're putting this like rigorous course load on students and a lot of times, music can be something that is like sort of a break in the day to help the students to focus more. And I know from experience with my own kids that that and that was the case, that having the ability to take a, an instrument during the day, like that was sort of the, I mean, I'll take, I can't really talk about my kids anymore because they're getting mad at me, but.
They're attacking.
Yeah. But anyway, so that's, so my concern is really that we're taking away at such a young age, and we're making them make a choice at such a young age. And some kids graduate high school not, not even knowing what they want to do. They might go through this pathway and then, you know, be, maybe it's engineering, and then they get through it, and then they decide, okay, I want to go to college or something else. And we're sort of pigeonholing them, making them like sort of give up the, that sort of, that piece of it. And so I, I'm concerned that we're not able to find some sort of a workaround. And one of my suggestions, of course, was can we look at the physical education piece again and see if there's some way that students can be allowed to take an online course after school? Or, I don't know, like, I don't know what the solution is, but like they, you know, some of these kids, you know, if they're in band, for example, they do have some physical component involved. Maybe there's some sort of extracurricular thing that they can do that's not maybe a sport, but something else, where they can still not have to take gym and be able to take band or, or concert choir.
Right. And just to clarify, PE is a state graduation requirement, it's not a Pembroke High School requirement. So like, just like world language, some schools have a requirement, other schools don't. We, we don't, we didn't add the PE requirement, the state is saying that we have to do it.
No, but we waive it though for.
We, we do waive it, which, you know, is our, as a district's interpretation of the guidance. A lot of school districts around us don't waive it for any, any reason. You must take a semester of PE every single year. And we've gone back and forth here on this committee since the requirement changed. You know, I, we, just in general, don't allow credit-bearing graduation requirement courses to be taken online after school or over the summer. But again.
Look, I, I remember debating this very hotly one night when some of these requirements changed. And it was, it was a pretty significant debate, very similar to what you're talking about. I remember Mike and I being on one side of this, and Jenny and Sue being on a different side of this, and we sort of went back, not Sue you, but Sue Scruggs, right? I will tell you, I, I think having a physical education requirement is massively important. Probably won't surprise a lot of people, but for a lot of reasons, right? It is a decompression point of the day, it is sometimes some kids, it is the time they move, right? In the day for other kids, it is camaraderie and what have you. But it is no different than what you just said candidly for band, right?
Right, it's the exact same.
You get a lot out of it. And so it's not about band versus gym, or this versus that. I do think, having lived this now with three kids going through Pembroke High School, one partially and two completely, it, there's no way that every kid can do everything that they want to do, no matter what it is, right? And there is at some point going to be a choice, and we as parents help them make the best choice they can make. I, I think pushing some of this back to the, in the STEM curriculum into eighth grade, just to give some of these kids a better feel for what's coming, I think is really good. I mean, anytime we can sort of open the eyes of some of our younger people into what the possibility really is or is not, is important. But I, for one, would struggle with changing. I, I actually think, I didn't want to give waivers on the physical education piece of it, so, and that's just my position.
So, so you didn't want to give waivers for the sports?
Correct, I wanted every.
You wanted everybody regardless of whether they were taking a sport.
Yeah, I mean, the sport thing made the most sense to me, but if you're swimming outside because you're in a swim league, or you're doing something outside of a sport, I mean, all of that, you know, all of those things came up. But, you know, the only, the only thing that made sense to me was you don't want a kid who's playing a sport to then go and get hurt in, in phys ed, right? I still call it gym, so sorry. But, you know, and I got that, right? I understood it. But I, I do think that requirement's a very important requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's important that the kids move and that they be involved in some sort of a physical program. But my question is, is there a way to give a waiver if they're doing something outside of the school, you know, like dance or something? Like a lot of, a lot of kids who might be involved in music might be in dance outside of the school, and maybe that covers the, and maybe they do an online course to get the other piece of the education.
But because it's a graduation requirement that, that is a state-level requirement, I don't know what the standards are in, in a lot of those programmings, right? And at the end of the day, I, as a school committee member, and, you know, actually you as the chair, are signing off on that diploma, saying that everyone has met that requirement. I, I do think, I, I, it's a far more serious thing than just sort of, hey, someone's not going to take gym for a couple of months. It's, it's about the standards at the end of the day, I, I think. And I do think it's important to know that, that kids have that avenue. Because remember, part of physical education isn't just the physiology and the exercise management. I mean, David, you know better than anybody, right? There's a health component, there's a nutrition component, there, there are tests. I, I remember my kids taking tests in gym, and I'm like, you're kidding me? I mean, I never did that. But physical education is more than just that now. You know, I mean.
Yeah, no, I was, for anyone who knows me, I went to Springfield College, and, and basically, I'm educated to be a high school phys ed teacher. Actually, back then, you could teach elementary and phys ed, high school level. And our big belief, you know, was what I called the humanities philosophy, but the idea was to educate the spirit, the mind, and the body. And I think, you know, I, I certainly understand the idea of, you know, could someone take a dance class? Could someone, you know, take a, a swimming class outside? I definitely think you could, but I, I'd rather see it here in the school, under the watchful eye. I think Patrick makes a good point. You can't do everything. You, you wish you could. And I think at some point, you have to make choices. And sometimes when you're 15, that's a difficult choice, sometimes when you're 18, but when you're 62, there are still difficult choices out there. I also understand the part of, it's a, you know, it's in the guidelines, it's basically state law, you have to take physical education. So I would really struggle with kind of waiving that piece, if that, you know, going on the record.
One of the things we did talk about in the subcommittee was that there are single semester courses that the kids can take to kind of, you know, fill the gaps of interest a little bit. So it's not, you know, they might not be able to take, you know, a full year course, but there are individual, more elective style that do fit in with the criteria for the pathways that, you know.
Right, you can still get exposure to the pathways as a, as a band student, for example. You just won't be able to, to get the, the full-year electives that give you the scholar designation on your transcript. And again, that means something to us, right? You know, when you send your transcript to a college, they strip it, right? They have their own criteria for which they're weighting students' GPA, what, what academics, what extracurriculars, what everything is worth. You know, we spend a lot of time talking about GPAs, and the first thing they do is strip it away, right? Kids are so worried about, what is my GPA? And, you know, you're applying to Providence or to Princeton, and they strip it and calculate their own as soon as they get your transcript. So, you know, we did, when we looked at the students that originally identified as a conflict in their schedule, a lot of those students chose a semester elective in a pathway that abuts PE. So they have PE for semester one, and they have a, a semester elective for semester two. So they're getting some exposure, so then, you know, a year down the road, they could make an informed decision, or even two years down the road. Some of the pathways you can get in with just two years of, of solid coursework, as opposed to three, like the engineering and biomedical.
The, the other point I'd like to make is, you know, I remember being in high school a long time ago, but, you know, I went to high school, I had a graduating class of 767, and that's a heck of a lot of kids, and we were only 10, 11, 12. You kind of got blocked out of some courses, and every now and then you had to kind of take a filler. And I remember taking a child psychology course, and I kept saying to my father, who was my principal at the time, saying, what am I doing in here? The last thing I would do is child psychology. And I will tell you, it was probably one of my most favorite courses that I took in high school. And I actually was working on my master's at BU in psychology, and I unfortunately, because of some family circumstances, had to, to not finish the program. But a course I took totally by accident opened up a whole new world for me. And I think that can happen to some young kids, where you get into something and say, hey, I never thought of this. I never saw myself as that person, you know, so that's just a thought.
I think it's great that the kids can take, you know, semester courses, and I think that's definitely a step in the right direction, obviously. And I am a huge advocate of pathways programs, so I don't want to say that I'm disparaging that in any way. I'm just.
You're just trying to make it all possible.
I just, I, exactly. I just, you know, I'm mourning the fact that we can't have music as important as gym, I'm sorry, important as physical education. So I feel like.
I still got gym.
I think it is just as important, and it's just as important, especially to those students who may not be athletes. They're not, they may not be ones who even enjoy doing anything physical, but when they get out and start, you know, doing the marching band or whatever, it's like they're actually doing something physical and enjoying it. And so I think the trick is to find something, you know, that the student can do physically that they enjoy, and not force them into a program that, you know, was sort of like cut out for just, you know, like an athlete, to be honest, like, because that's really what physical education, let's play, you know, whatever this game is, or walk around the track, whatever. I would rather see the students do something they really want to do. And I think that music offers, you know, it, there's studies that show that it offers a, you know, the, helps the brain to work in a, in a new way, and help them to be better students, in my, you know, like that's, well, the research I've done.
Right. And I think the differentiation is that, I think as a community in Pembroke, we value music, we value the arts just as much as we value PE, but the state has set a graduation requirement for PE and not for music and the arts.
Right, right. And I, and I think they're equally important, and I'd like to find a way so they don't compete, in that the pathways program doesn't compete with it.
And world language also.
In world language.
But, no, but you're making the point, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, that's actually exactly making the point is, you know, there is no way, right, when you start to break it down, that says, maybe, what if I want to take two languages?
Which is what we talked about.
Right? What if, you know, what if I, I am an athlete who then also wants to, wants to be in music? Because I'll tell you, I, I had a couple of athletes that, they, they all played an instrument, and at a certain point, they ended up choosing athletics over, over music for a lot of reasons, by the way. It wasn't necessarily just.
A lot of them were able to do both.
No, no, right. But my point is, there's a lot of things that are going to come up in a high school career that are going to present a conflict, right?
Yeah.
If we started waiving requirements for all of those, we'd all, all of a sudden have no requirements. I, I do think that, I understand what you're saying, Sue, and I think this community, my last year as chairman on this committee, was pretty clear is how they felt about band, right? I mean, we're still saving the band signs, right? So, had to work it in, Erin. But the, the reality is, nobody's diminishing music, or the arts at all. And I think when Susan has put together just a phenomenal program, but the reality is we have a graduation requirement.
She's color Chapman now.
Chapman, it's, old habits die hard. And I've known that for a long time too. But I, I guess at the end of the day, both are important, but one is a state mandated requirement. We have to take that. That is our job, is to take that.
One of the ideas I mentioned, and it got shot down pretty quickly, but the high school I went to had, was a standard like one through six, and no switching around. We had the offer of a zero period, and that got chopped down fairly quickly when I brought up a zero period here, but.
Right, so just to clarify that, for those of you that don't know what zero period means, it means a, a period of school that happens before the school day even starts, offering students an opportunity to take another course. We would have to staff it.
We would have to impact.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Right, yeah, we didn't just shoot it down because we didn't like the idea, we just.
I took.
Turn it, Allison, stop making suggestions.
I took a zero period two years, I'm just saying, it was something that existed, and so I brought it up and it. I took a zero period two years, I'm just saying, it was something that existed and so I brought it up and it-
Right.
I'm not saying I was laughed at, but it was definitely-
We understood what you were asking.
It was definitely not-
Just the, the economic factor-
No, and I get it.
It's not a bad idea because honestly, at the middle school, we use them tight in time for, um, tours right now. So it's, it's not like it's an off-the-wall idea.
No, we didn't laugh, it was-
We, we, actually, I did, I did laugh a little bit because Allison hasn't been part of the committee during a negotiation season yet, so.
So more to come here.
You will enjoy it after that.
And then that's also the talk of like, okay, so if you only have thirty slots, who gets those thirty slots for PE at zero period? So I, I get it, there's, you know, light weight.
Yeah.
We, we did talk about, you know, some off-the-wall ideas as well, so.
We were brainstorming and trying to come up with some outside-of-the-box ideas. It's just, we, we couldn't figure anything out that worked.
Right, and Gwen obviously wants students to continue in music, so we, we, she's exploring a different way to approach some of the music electives. We've talked about a music pathway, right? So all of that conversation is happening too, like, we're, we're trying to come at it from all of the angles in hopes that when we are presenting with you with the program of studies for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, you'll see some places in there where you saw some movement that makes doing more possible, so.
I do, just to end this, but I want to say one thing because I think it's really important. Now that these are all televised and a lot more people in town actually watch these, right? And understand it, this is so important because this is where the work happens, right? In these subcommittees, and just with the two conversations we had about a policy in this headpiece, it's why this work is so hard and it's why this work takes so long. Because it's about every suggestion, looking at every iteration, every possibility to get to the best answer. And then you guys bring it here and you're like, are you kidding me, you have more? But it's, I mean, it's hours worth that we just kind of went through and talked about quickly. But, you know, hats off to those subcommittees, you guys are doing a great job.
Absolutely. All right.
We've also decided to add liaison updates underneath this, so it'll be a standing agenda item. If any of you that have liaison roles have had a meeting, Allison, I think we have our first PTAD meeting next week, so.
Next week, yeah.
I have a question though, I did find out at the last meeting, because I'm taking over Susan's, that Emily is into the DEI committee.
Yeah, we haven't met yet.
You haven't met yet?
No, we will include you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You will be invited.
I just didn't want to not show up, I thought that would be rude.
And I think with the VOTAC committee, we decided we were going to have one more, at least one more meeting in the next, yeah.
So what's, do you have any updates with VOTAC?
Yeah, so we gave an update after we met the last time, just around. We met to talk about the timing, the planning and, you know, the, the figures associated with the project. Um, just for broadcast transparency, there is a online, I think it's a Zoom meeting on October fifth, that South Shore Tech is holding for their communities, but it's open to anybody, right? So you can log in and hear an update on their project. They'll talk a little bit more about their timeline and then they're scheduled to have an in-person, similar type meeting in Marshfield in November.
This is for their building?
For their building project, yeah.
The master plan meeting happened a week ago and we're still plugging along with that. The consultants for VHB went to Pembroke Celebrates to meet with people and they had a tent and they were, were supposed to hear at the next meeting how that went. And they're also going to go to a flag, Sunday flag football, because a lot of people go to that.
Yeah, they are busy.
So try to get like sort of a cross-section of people in town. And so we should be, um, developing the chapters at our next meeting, like the, the start of that. So that's really the update right now. Anybody else? That's it. All right, so future meeting dates and topics, we have, the next one's on-
So October third is your next meeting, we'll do the enrollment pieces. Mayor Bethel will present the achievement report. Budget Subcommittee will have met before then, so maybe you can give some updates to.
All right.
For, for enrollment, will that include like kids that aren't in the public school system, right? Like private schools or-
Yeah, so there's a series of reports that we supply with October one enrollment, which includes class sizes both at the elementary, middle and high school level by course. It shows you summer move-in, move-outs, it shows you transfers of students. It doesn't tell you if they, well, we, we do track private schools and charter schools, but- But if there's information that you're looking that I didn't supply, just let me know, we can pull it together.
Thank you.
Okay, and so before we go into executive session, any last, you, thank you so much for coming, just want to say, you know-
Thanks, Lauren.
I hope you enjoyed your first meeting.
Yeah, come back with any ideas you have on any of this, we'd be happy to hear it, glad to hear.
And I'll send you the policy electronically so you have it and you can chair it, okay?
Nice job.
So, um, so do we have a motion to go to executive session pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three to conduct a review and potential approval and release of executive session minutes as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school community as declared by the chair with additional business to be discussed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
It's a roll call.
Roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye, so we go to executive session. An aye, so we move to executive session. An aye, so we move to executive session.